Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City School Board meeting. We will now stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Good evening to everyone. Could I please get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Communications, Dr. Gilbert?
Yes. Your first communication is we would like to congratulate Bradley Academy's school counselor, Allison Payne. She has been named the Middle Tennessee Grades 5 through 8 finalist in the Tennessee Teacher of the Year Award. The Tennessee Teacher of the Year will be chosen from nine statewide finalists in the fall. And then the final winner will represent Tennessee in the National Teacher of the Year competition. So we certainly want to congratulate Allison. The following schools will receive funding up to the amounts indicated that I will tell you about to operate the fresh fruit and vegetable program. Bellwood Bowden Preschool, $19,400. Bradley Academy, $18,900. And Hobgood Elementary, $16,050. And also, school nutrition has applied for and received a grant for approximately $10,000 that will be used to replace equipment in Mitchell-Nelson Primary. A special thanks to Girl Scout Gorillia Beck, who is earning her Star Award by working in the Bellwood Parenting Center. She has been helping with Summer ESP. She's been helping take care of the parenting center, so we certainly appreciate that. And she has used her babysitting money to purchase the materials and supplies she uses while working with our students. And then the final communication is we would like to congratulate Mitchell-Nelson Elementary's 6th grade teacher, Gail Porterfield. She has been asked by Congresswoman Diane Black to serve on the Congressional Steering Committee for Innovation in Education. And those are your communication items.
Thank you. Board under consent items, are there any you need to pull out or have discussion before I ask for a vote to approve? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor of the approval of consent items, sign of aye.
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 Action items, Dr. Gilbert?
Okay. Mr. Anderson?
First action item is behind tab three. It's approval of the School Debt Service Budget Amendments. This is a housekeeping amendment requested by City Hall under the new GASP, 54 Rules and Regulations of Accounting. And GASP stands for Government Accounting Standards Bureau. It's a new way to show how the school system assets are accounted for. The requirement now is that the school system actually show the money that comes in and goes out to pay for debt on a school building. What's marked in yellow on the following pages in Exhibit A shows the money that the city gives to us. And then they show how the money is used or transferred. If you see in the budget 1112, the last column, the $74,997, that is the loan repayment for the EESI, too. The City Hall is responsible for that, so they have to show it on our books as well. And if you move over two additional pages to the big yellow block at the bottom, this shows the School Debt Service Fund. City Council approved this document at their meeting last week, and they've asked us to make sure it just coincides with ours, and they've sent us this information to include in ours. But like I said, it is a housekeeping fund under the new accounting standards. There's no money, extra money in or extra money out. It's just the way the accounting has to be shown.
Ms. Baker, do we have to have a motion and approval of this? Okay.
I got a question.
Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Anderson, this is based on, like attendance. What attendance number are we basing proposal for 211, 212, 21112?
On this particular thing or just our regular budget?
Well, on this particularly, like the attendance, it's, you know, it's up from 2010 to 2011 compared to 2011, 2012. Are we looking at increase in?
No, I actually dropped it about 40 students in your budget document that you approved. 6850 was the number I used for our budget, and originally, last year's number was 6890. So we dropped it that many students. But the part that, we've already gone through and approved the budget, this is just the debt service piece that's the housekeeping part of it.
Okay. Then answer your question, Mr. Campbell. Do you have another question?
Well, I do, but I may just give Mr. Anderson to ask him. But go down and look at the part, employee positions. Okay, we're looking at six less proposed, and the, I guess, full-time, part-time is 15 less.
Okay, you're talking on the first page?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, sir, that's the numbers from our budget that we provided to them.
So proposed 2011, 2012 is what our budget is based on that we've already adopted, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And answer my questions.
Ms. Phillips?
I just wanted to take a moment while we were mentioned in the City Council, and we don't get a chance to express our appreciation to their support, for their support for the Murfreesboro City Schools, and Mr. Washington's representing us to the council. And I just want to take a minute and express our appreciation.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
I'd move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Raniere. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next one is Ms. Baker, and we welcome her back tonight.
Okay, you have before you four different policies for second reading. I'll take each one individually. The first one is Board Policy BO31 regarding fundraising. Are there any questions or discussion regarding the revisions to this policy?
I had a comment. This is a good policy, and I appreciate everyone's work. I just wanted to take a minute and reiterate what I had said at our study session, which is, I really appreciate that we try very hard not to nickel-and-dime our parents to death. There are so many demands on the parents, and I think this policy supports that attitude, and I appreciate that.
Mr. Raniere?
Could we get either Ms. Baker or Dr. Gilbert to kind of go over, just to highlight this policy? Because I think it's important that we're putting a maximum on the number of fundraisers and what they might be. Someone might want to just go over that verbally so the public can hear it.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, this policy firstly divides the fundraisers into two different categories. You have active fundraisers and passive fundraisers. The active fundraisers are those which involve taking time out of the instructional day at the schools. The passive fundraisers would be the fundraisers that are similar to the, when the school system gets a percentage of, parents go and eat at certain restaurants, or vending machines, or bookstores, or yearbook sales. Also, it has a limit on the number of active fundraisers each year. Those are limited to four active fundraisers per year, and that's inclusive of any fundraisers conducted through the PTAs or PTOs. And the policy does, it has some criteria for holding the fundraisers, one of which is it discourages door-to-door sales. It does not encourage awarding one student a grand prize for raising the most funds once all students treated fairly and equally in participating in the fundraisers. Those are some of the highlights of this policy. Are there any others you'd like pointed out?
If I could, and I'm assuming, and I know this, but I'm going to ask you anyway. Dr. Gilbert, you have gone over with the principals in detail, this policy, and they feel comfortable with it.
Yes.
Thank you.
All righty. Mr. Raniere, you want to entertain a motion?
I'll move that we approve the fundraising policy as written.
Second. All righty. Ms. Ridley, if you'll call the roll.
Dr. Buckland?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Raniere?
Aye.
Ms. Wade?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, the next policy before you for second reading is Board Policy SS9, Child Nutrition Management. This policy, if you'll notice, there's a revision on the table that includes, on the second page, line 36, and principle was added to what was in your original board packet. Are there, is there any discussion or questions regarding this policy?
Is there a motion? Aye, so moved. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Ms. Ridley, you'll call the roll.
Dr. Buckland?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Raniere?
Aye.
Ms. Wade?
Yes.
Okay, the next policy before you for second reading is Board Policy STU38, Zero Tolerance Offenses. This policy, in the board's requirement to go over their policies every two years, I've revised this policy only by inserting language specifically out of the state code, so it's very, very clear when the principals or any other staff have to pull it and review it. And that's the majority of the changes. The one before you, I did have one additional item I wanted to add. If you look at line 33 on the first page, where it says, "The policy shall be published in the Code of Conduct," I'd like to add after that, "The Code of Conduct set forth in the Student-Parent Handbook." So it's, we know that's where it's located. If anyone has a question, well, where do I find the Code of Conduct? Are there any questions or discussion regarding this policy?
Mr. Raniere and then Ms. Duggan.
I think, again, anytime we have a policy of this magnitude, I think it's always good at board meetings that we can kind of go over it a little bit. And the one thing I would like you to explain is to kind of explain zero tolerance and what kind of firearms we're talking about. So it's very specific in this policy, and I think it's very important that the public hear that.
Okay, this policy is based strictly on state law. There's a state law that requires every school system to have a zero tolerance policy. And I've pulled the language out of the state law and placed it in this policy. And it's under Tennessee Code Annotated Section 49-6-3401, which defines what a zero tolerance offense includes. It includes bringing a firearm to school and/or the unauthorized possession of a firearm on school property. And they define firearm pursuant to the United States Code section that defines firearm. And a firearm would include any weapon, including a starter gun, which will or is designed to or may readily be converted to expel a projectile by the action of an explosion. It also includes the frame or receiver of any such weapon. It includes any firearm muffler or firearm silencer. It also includes explosive incendiary devices or any similar destructive device, such as a bomb, grenade, rocket missile, mine, or poisonous substance. And that, all of that language comes straight out of the United States Code section that this statute references. The zero tolerance offense also includes the unlawful possession, use, sale, distribution, or delivery of any drug, including any controlled substance as defined by the state code, or alleged drug as defined by Tennessee Code Annotated 53-10-101. And the last zero tolerance offense category in the state law is includes battery of a teacher, principal, administrator, or any other employee of the school, where battery is defined as intentionally, knowingly, or recklessly causing bodily injury to another or causing physical contact with another person that is extremely offensive or provocative. So those are the categories that are included under the state statute for zero tolerance offenses.
And is there an appeal process? And could you, if there is, could you kind of go over those two, please?
Yes, there is an appeal process. First, it would be the principal that will determine, will decide whether or not the student committed a zero tolerance offense based on reviewing the policy. If the student or an employee of the school system, or the parent or guardian of the student disagrees with that decision, they have the right to appeal it within five days to the disciplinary hearing authority. And they will hear that appeal. They will make a determination as to whether or not they agree that the offense was a zero tolerance offense. And then they can also make a recommendation for a level of punishment to the director, but only the director is the one authorized to determine the actual level of punishment.
Ms. Duggan?
I just wanted to make a comment about the very last paragraph, which you've already mentioned, that our Director of Schools does have the authority to modify that. And I think, I'm thankful that is in the law, particularly since we're a pre-K through 6th grade system. My question was, though, if you would, one more time, give us the wording that you wanted to add on the first page, to make sure I wrote it down correctly.
Okay. It's at line 33, after Code of Conduct, include "as set forth in the Student-Parent Handbook."
Thank you. Are there any more questions or comments?
I move we accept this policy as written.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Ms. Ridley, if you'll call the roll.
Dr. Buckland?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Raniere?
Aye.
Ms. Wade?
Yes.
Okay, the next policy before the board for second reading is Board Policy PER29, Vacation Leave for 12-Month Personnel. This policy has been reviewed on first reading and at the board policy meetings. Are there any questions or discussion?
I move we accept it as written.
Thank you, Dr. Buckland. There's a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Ms. Ridley, if you'll call the roll.
Dr. Buckland?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Raniere?
Aye.
Ms. Wade?
Yes.
I know we passed, this policy will go into effect August 1st, or, I mean, it does not affect those who, those vacation days or whatever that are already accrued, am I right, or not?
Go ahead. Kelly, you want to answer that?
I'll let Ralph answer that.
This will go into effect October 1st.
Okay. Dr. Gilbert, reports and information?
Under reports and information, we have some special guests tonight. Most of you know that we have a leadership camp that we began last year in partnership with the Jennings and Rebecca Jones Foundation. Paul Vaughn is the administrator of that foundation, and we really appreciate his work with us. But we have, our children are here that have been participating in the camp, some of them. And I'm going to turn this over to the leaders, Gina Graham and Laura Heath, and thank them very much for leading this camp.
Good evening, board. We're very excited to be part of the camp again this year. For the past two weeks, 17 students from Murfreesboro City have been immersed into community leadership. They've recognized characteristics of leaders and the roles they play in the community. They've become aware of each individual's responsibility to be a contributing member of the community. They've learned about Murfreesboro's past and its promises of the future. And tonight, we have a lot of future leaders here with us. And Laura's going to talk a little bit about how they got chosen to be in the camp.
Hi, I'm Laura Heath. These students were nominated, actually, by their 4th grade teachers for, obviously, their strong leadership abilities, for their awareness, the responsibility to the community, and also for their understanding of the rights of others, and for their focusing, their ability, focusing their potential to help in the future for Murfreesboro. Each day, we talk about parliamentary procedures and Robert's Rules of Orders, so it's nice to see the media in action. And they haven't elected a chair, so I'd like to introduce their chair. This is Andrew Telford from Discovery, and he has a few words, and then I'll introduce the rest of the students.
Hello. As said before, I'm Andrew Telford, and I'm here to teach you about the Leadership Collaboration Camp of 2011. Every day, we take field trips to different places to learn about leadership qualities and the history of Murfreesboro. My favorite field trip so far has been to the Nissan plant. We learned how they make the cars, where they make them, and what tools they use.
Hi, my name is Caroline Lewis, and I'm from Northville Elementary, and I'm here to introduce the website. This is the class webpage. Right here, you could click here, and if you wanted to blog about the camp, you could type in whatever you wanted. Here's the agenda. The agenda tells us about what we do, where we eat, what we do in the morning, and in the afternoon. Participates is the whole classes and all the schools that they go to.
My name is Tyler Erdman, and I'm from Mitchell-Nelson, and I'm also in the Leadership Camp of 2011. And we have two albums of pictures, and I keep track of what we do daily. This is the day we went to the battlefield, and we, they told us the history about the Civil War, and there's a place at the battlefield called the Slaughterhouse, where the North was attacked and had to retreat. And we all earned our Junior Ranger badges there for completing six activities in the book. And... And... We went to the MTSU Airport, and they told us about how they worked, and they told us about the dispatchers they had, and all the different airplanes. They had 29 aircraft there. We got, we didn't get to see their simulators, but they had some there, and they had, we got to see their maintenance, where they worked on their, repaired their airplanes. And that was all.
Hi, my name is Edwin Walker, and I'm from John Pitterd Elementary. You are invited to our Leadership Collaboration Graduation Ceremony on Friday, July 1st, from 10:00 to 11:30.
And this is Caroline. She's from Siegel. I would also like, while she's handing those out, to introduce a parent, one of our parents, Allison Dial, one of our students. Her name is Laura Dial, that would like to speak about her daughter in the camp this week.
Thank you. Hi. When we got the invitation in the mail, we didn't really know what to expect. Said a leadership camp, said she'd been nominated. And Allison was pretty excited. She thought that sounded pretty cool. And we have just been amazed at everything she's gotten to do. And what I'm experiencing as a parent is she comes home every day, and she is just bursting with enthusiasm to tell me about all the things she's seen and experienced. These aren't things that, you know, normal everyday citizens get to do, especially not all in two weeks. And so she comes home, and she's telling me about everything she has to do, and the next minute, she's gone. I'm like, where's my daughter? And so I go look for her, and she's at a computer, and I say, "What are you doing?" "Oh, I'm blogging about what I did today." So, I mean, it's just, you know, it's wonderful. I don't blog, and so it's very impressive that this program has given all of these different things to the kids. So I just wanted to say how important it's been and how grateful we are to have been included. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips?
Chairman Wade, I just wanted to take a moment and say that I have a great privilege of getting to be at the same place this wonderful leadership camp was, at MTSU's Aerospace Department, the Air Traffic Control Division. And I was so impressed with these kids. They were so, so well behaved, and they were so interested, and asked such great questions, and they were, you know, they were so enthusiastic, and I was just so impressed. And I really thought that they're getting some great leadership at home, but also in their teachers, Ms. Heath and Ms. Graham. So I wanted to thank them for all that they do, and also the Rebecca and Jennings Jones Foundation for helping support this in Murfreesboro City Schools.
I have a question. Ms. Graham and Ms. Heath, there's some more that were sitting. Did you want to introduce them in front of the camera so they can see themselves later?
Yes.
And I think this same group is entertaining mirth. Coming real soon. Beware.
My name's Lexi Platt, and I'm from John Pitterd.
My name is Annabeth Campbell, and I'm from Bradley Academy.
My name is Nico Vedari, and I'm from Skills.
My name is Tora Jakara, and I'm from Hobgood.
My name is Michael Getzinger, and I'm from TLA.
My name is Allison Dial, and I'm from Skills Elementary.
Let's give this group a hand.
And I want to thank you for your support, for letting us do these special things with these children, because we couldn't do it without your support, and certainly could not do it without your understanding of the partnerships we have in the community with Jennings and Rebecca Jones Foundation. So thank you so much. And I appreciate Laura and Gina. And last year, when we talked with them about doing the camp, I'm not sure that they knew what they were getting into, but they've had a good time with it, and I really appreciate their... And this goes on throughout the year, too. They will be doing several things throughout the year, so it's really neat to watch the kids throughout the year. So thank you very much, and thank you, parents, for your support. Our next camp is our Tech Explorer Camp, and we have Gretchen Campbell, who's here, and she's going to introduce two of our new partners. We barely have a jewel in the Tennessee Technology Center here in this town, and so this year, we are partnering with them. We will be partnering with them for a health camp later on that they, I'm sure, will tell you about. But just finished partnering with them with a tech camp. So Gretchen?
Good evening. Thank you for letting me come and tell you guys about the camp today. We've had a great opportunity this year to partner with the Tennessee Technology Center at Murfreesboro with a camp that we've been able to do at the center. And it was a great thing. We had a lot of folks on the Murfreesboro City School side, Trent Cheves, and Mickey Brooks, and our instruction department was a big part of this, our transportation department was a part of this. And Andrea Bell played a huge part in this because she was able to get the kids started. We picked them up at Franklin Heights, and they were able to go over to this Tennessee Technology Center at Murfreesboro to do this. And it was a great opportunity for these guys. I'd like to show you a little bit about the, a little bit about the camp and show you some pictures of the camp that they went to. So I'm going to go to the website here. This was their website that they made for the week. They had their schedule listed, and they had, they took a lot of pictures this week. And it was a great opportunity. The kids got to learn about iPods. They got to take pictures with it. They got to stream the video in and make all kinds of movies for them and that kind of thing. And it was a great, great day, a week for them. In fact, they didn't want to leave at the end, apparently. So that was awesome. And we appreciate Tennessee Technology Center really rolling out the red carpet for us. Here's a little bit, like, kind of a video with some rock music, so just wanted to warn you. And it is, it is a little small, but we're going to show it. It is a little small, but we're going to show it. Lots of other pictures through here, and they did commercials for the Tennessee Technology Center, and this is one of the guys talking about the Technology Center, he was like a salesman, and did a lot of cool things with it, so they had a great time, and we do appreciate that. And with that, I would like to introduce Carol Perrier and Judy Henninger to come and talk about the Technology Center.
Thank you, Gretchen, and again, thank you for letting us be here tonight, because it truly was just a fabulous week, and we value this partnership greatly, and actually, I stopped by Dr. Gilbert's office one day, and if you've ever done that, in about 15 minutes, Judy and I were having a camp, two of them, but it was just absolutely wonderful, and certainly, Murfreesboro City Schools, the staff, the folks, were wonderful to work with, and I'm talking about Judy in just a second, because she handled it on the TTC Murfreesboro side, but just a wonderful opportunity. When we talked about the camps, we wanted to have two goals. One was certainly to give the students an opportunity to learn about the technology that is so important in their classroom, and will affect every part of their life as they grow up. So, the, they, they did that, and they got to go to visit all the campuses, the different courses, and buildings, and programs, and take pictures, and make the websites, and the commercial, so that was one part. We wanted them to have a quality week on school, at the school. The second part was to get the parents involved, and on Thursday night, we had an open house, and so the students could show their, their projects that they had worked on all week, and then also, the parents got to hear about the Technology Center. And parents went home with a packet of information about the programs and the things that we can offer for them, if they decide to change jobs, or find themselves looking for a new career, so it was a great time to educate the students and the parents, and so it was a wonderful, wonderful week, and the students were so well behaved, and they did want to stay the whole week, and I think I would have let them, although some of our equipment requires you to be tall enough to hit the switch buttons and things, so there was a little bit of a problem there, but we were just excited to be a part, and very excited for this new partnership to be going on. I'm going to turn the program over to Ms. Judy Henninger, she's our Assistant Director, and literally, after Dr. Gilbert and I started this brainchild, and she turned it over to Gretchen, I turned it over to Mrs. Henninger, to make sure that we did what was needed, and she did a fabulous job in taking that leadership role. So, I'd like for her to share with you a little bit about the previous camp, as well as the camp for next week, in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Perrier. We appreciate you having us tonight, so we can tell you what your wonderful children did. We were just the catalyst, that's all we were. It was the kids that are in your city school system that came and brought life to our building. The camp that we had was an IT camp. Trent and Mickey are fabulous teachers. My faculty had no idea that I had kids in the building. That was the quietest group of children I have ever seen. They kept coming and saying, "Are you sure they're still in the building? They haven't left?" We never saw them. Now, they went to the programs, they interviewed students, they interviewed teachers, they saw how all the equipment worked in the different classrooms. So, this was a new technology for them, but they were studious, I saw them every morning, and I saw them every afternoon. On the last day of their day with us, several kids came up, especially one little girl who was sitting at the table, got her little goodie bag, and was getting ready to leave, and she had tears in her eyes, and she said, "I don't want to leave. Why do I have to leave? Can I come back on Monday?" And on Thursday night, at the parent night, a little boy who was not old enough to be in the IT Academy camp, said, "I want to come next year, but I know I'm not old enough, so I'm going to wait two years, and I'll be back." So, it showed that we had done the right thing. We had sparked an interest, created something that they'd not had an opportunity for. Now, we're very excited, because on July the 18th, we will have our second camp. Our second camp is an allied health camp, and we invite all of you to come, because the children are going to learn about what phlebotomy is, how to make an arm and draw blood. They're not drawing anybody's blood. It's called Kool-Aid, okay? It's Kool-Aid, and they don't get needles. But they're going to make fake arms. We have them learning about nutrition, they're going to do DNA samplings, and watch it grow, they're going to learn how pills are made, with learning how they're pill-packed, and how that works in life. They're going to learn about the bones, they're going to also learn about laparoscopic surgery, they're going to get to pick paperclips out of a fake body. So, they will find out, there's all types of careers, and through your innovation in wanting to partner with us, we're going to be able to expose another group of children to a group of six different allied health fields, so we thank you for that.
Really appreciate Judy and Carol, just a tremendous partnership, and very excited about that expansion, and glad you stopped by my office that day, that was a good thing. It was a good thing. You have, you have your personnel update under Tab 5, and then your monthly revenue and expenditure report under Tab 6. That's where you take over, Mr. Anderson.
Okay, we, we are at the 91.7% of our year. Last year at this time, we, we had $871,000 of net income. This year, we're at $1,239,000 net income, so we're, we're on target for that. Our revenue collection stream is at 91.2, we're slightly behind the 91.7. Part of that reason, of course, is because sales tax lagged two months behind, they don't get shown on the report until later, and we, we make adjustments to those as they come in. Our expenditure is at 88.8% of the 91.7, so we're on target for that as well, so we're, we're feeling okay about our budget as far as we've gone so far this year, we've got one month left in it. Any questions on the budget report?
Sounds good.
Okay. On the next one, this is your year-end report of your attendance and enrollment numbers. We ended the year in our PTR kindergarten through 3rd grade at 18.47 students per teacher, that's regular classroom teacher, and grades 4 through 6 at 19.6. So, that was very good. We also ended the year with a 96% attendance rate, and that is very good. We're very pleased with that number. Last year at this time, we were, after the last month, we were 95.1, so we're real glad to see that. Enrollment total for the year, at the end of the year, was 6,881, and our budget was based on 6,890, so I'm short by nine students on that, but I felt that was a pretty good one, since it was the end-of-the-year report, typically that drops a little bit, so overall, the attendance report was, was really good, as we ended up the year, and we're real, real pleased with that.
Ms. Phillips, please.
Just wondering, what do you attribute the great attendance record to? Was it just because people aren't sick so much at the end of the year?
I think everyone was so excited about this school year, they all didn't want to stay home.
Right, Stu?
There was a lot of excitement at this school year towards the end, and I just really think that has, that has a factor, and as they didn't, so, but we didn't have the sicknesses, so you're, you're right.
Yeah, I believe it, though. I believe the excitement.
So, Mr. Anderson, we were, we were only down about 52 students from last year at this, this time, is that my, is that my recollection?
Yes, yes.
And that's, that's about what we, we were, we were close in estimating that, were we not?
Yes, I think I estimated 50.
Right.
Thank you.
Your annual agenda is behind Tab 8, and that is the end of our reports and information.
Are there any questions, from the board members?
I have a question.
Ms. Duggan?
I have a couple of questions. I have two questions. One, what is the status of our teachers having copies of their math teacher's manuals and their reading teacher's manuals, since those are new adoptions? I know they're getting training this summer in those areas, but do they already have those manuals in their hands?
Would you like to come and make a report on that, please, at the podium?
We ordered all of the math teacher resource kits prior to the end of the year, and teachers had the opportunity to come by and pick them up at the office, or we had them available so they could pick them up during the training. And I would say probably 80% of those have been picked up already. We were, are ordering on July 1st, the math student materials, and we hope to have those delivered into the school the week of July 18th, that'll be the first week principals are back in their buildings. As far as the reading adoption's concerned, that is, I heard from Morgan Branch on Monday that it's sitting on the commissioner's desk, waiting on a signature, and that's our last step. We've been through quite a few steps to make this happen, and we don't see any roadblocks for there, but we should hear pretty soon. So, as soon as that happens, we'll place that order, and it's, we're going to, it's going to be by the skin of our teeth getting them in for the beginning of the school year, but we knew that, we knew that it was a late adoption, and we'll get them in just as soon as we can. We are scheduling the training on the reading series during the first four days of in-service coming back. The trainings are only a half a day, but we've staggered them so that the classes can be smaller, so we have about 13 different sessions during those first four days of school.
I thank you for being diligent to make sure that the teachers had the math materials. It's just so important that teachers have those materials over the summer to study, as they have time to do that. And I know with the reading, since it isn't the year for reading, that has been another issue, but I just want to say publicly, too, how much I appreciate particular individuals at the State Department that have worked with us to make this happen for our teachers, I think, and for the students, I think it's very important. The other question I have, which you may be able to answer, too, is, with the Common Core state standards, what has the district decided about the rollout of that for this fall?
Well, I'll start with reading, and with reading, we are actually purchasing a Common Core edition of the reading series. It's the latest one that's on print, and at the beginning of each unit, it outlines the Common Core standards. So, for kindergarten, 1st and 2nd grade, that's going to be a relatively easy transition into the Common Core. So, our goal is that we will use those Common Core standards in our unit planning, and look at how those standards are deconstructed along the way. Math is a little trickier, because the content doesn't align quite as easy. For example, let me give you an example, with money, they don't even mention money in kindergarten or 1st grade, it's not mentioned until 2nd grade. We are going to go forward with Common Core for sure, with kindergarten and 1st grade in math, and I actually talked with a representative from McGraw-Hill that we are purchasing our math materials, and they are developing a crosswalk to help us make that transition. So, we'll have those materials for teachers that, once again, they can use in their unit planning. With 2nd grade, we're really going to look very carefully at the preparation between in 2nd grade, to prepare students for 3rd grade Tennessee standards, because as you know, we will be still tested on the Tennessee standards up until the year 2014-15. So, we want to be pretty careful about that, and we want to make sure that we send our 3rd graders, our 2nd graders into 3rd grade, well-prepared for the next school year. So, I anticipate we'll move that direction, but we'll also reference those Tennessee standards pretty strong in 2nd grade in math.
Because what parents need to understand is that our incoming kindergarten children, they will be the first children to be tested on these new Common Core state standards with a new test.
Yes, and it'll be a national assessment.
Yes.
And probably have benchmark assessments along the way, so we really want to make sure that we're preparing our students to be ready for that assessment.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Renier?
Dr. Gilbert, can you tell us what the status is of the board computers, and are we going to be able to get them up and running, say, by the first, by our work session in September? Since that's the basic start, fairly much of the start of the school year, it should be nice to have them online and be ready to go, if possible.
Yes, of course, we have the, the laptop computers for you. We also, Ms. Ridley headed up a team to investigate the different programs available. After looking at those programs, it was decided that we could actually do it easier ourselves, and so they put together a program to be able to send the information electronically to you through email, and have it available for your board agenda packets for next month, if we want to go and, and start pushing it for next month. We're, we're ready to move forward with it.
Thank you. Campbell?
If that, that occurs, then this building is equipped for us to use those laptops here? Am I right?
Yes, our technology department from city schools came over and checked it out, but you will have an email to you, so you'll have it downloaded in your computer from home, when you get it, you know, like on Wednesday or so, you'll be able to do that. But yes, it is, is ready for us, if you need to go look at something, it's here.
And actually, Ms. Hall is here tonight, experimenting to make sure of that.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Let me continue to invite all to come out to our policy study sessions. It's a good study session, you get to hear a lot of wholesome conversation and changes we'd like to see made, so please come out and be with us on the second Tuesday night of the month. If there is no other business, and certainly, we're glad to see you back, Ms. Baker, but certainly, we thank Mr. Douglas for filling in, but thank you, we're glad to see you. Is there a motion to?
I move we adjourn.
Say it.